Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Williamsburg City Council Work Session of April 10th. Ms. McKay, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Ponce.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Here.
Ms. Kernscher.
Here.
It takes us to item three on the agenda, items for city council meetings. Mr. Trivitt, do you have a preview for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a full meeting on Thursday, starting with public hearings. The first public hearing is for the city council to consider a request for an appeal for an ARB denial at, for the demolition of 745 Scotland Street. The second one is to consider a public hearing regarding the amendment of the ARB Design Review Guidelines. And then we have three public hearings related to the budget. The first is to consider the budget itself, the second is to consider the real estate tax rate, and the third is to consider the utility rate. And then, under unfinished business, we have the actual action that you all began last month of changing the voting precincts in the city. And then under new business, we have two items. The first is to consider the recurring regional stormwater management agreement, and the second one is to award a bid for the repairs to read out park related to the recent fire.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? All right, it takes us to our first public comment portion of the meeting, which is an opportunity for anyone to come forward, address city council, and on any matter that they deem of interest. Seeing none, I'll close that public comment period, and we'll go on to background presentations. And first, we have a presentation regarding the current status of the Virginia Peninsula Community College and its future direction. Today, we're fortunate enough to have Dr. Tawana Porter Brennan here with us, president of the college. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me here today. I may speak quickly, just out of respect for your time, but please feel free to ask me to slow it down if you need to. Can I just click my, use the keyboard here to advance?
Please, sir.
Let's see, there we go. All right, wonderful. Well, thank you again. I'd like to share a little bit about what's going on currently at the college now and what we have in store for our very near future. I did want to take, to show you my leadership team. And what's important about this team is that this is a fairly new team. The majority of the leadership team, the president's cabinet, has been here for less than five years. One of the challenges with that is that we don't have a lot of historical knowledge, which I think every great organization needs. But one of the benefits is that there's a lot of new energy and entrepreneurial thinking around the cabinet. And so I wanted to share what my, who my leadership team was. They're always eager to reach out and help and respond. And if you ever can't get any one of me, my leadership team is more than happy to, to respond to the needs of our community. I want to share a little bit about the current demographics of the college. I think we're all aware, community colleges across the country have seen a decrease in enrollment. The college's enrollment currently is a little under 9,000 traditional students. So those are students who are there getting a certificate or associate's degree or something that has a credit attached to it. And another 1,000 students are in workforce development. So those are the short-term courses, I want to be a welder, a plumber, HVAC technician, or a phlebotomist. And so we are seeing an increase in the number of students who are coming to us for workforce credentials. So while the college has seen a decrease in traditional enrolled students, where we are seeing a lot of the gains is in our workforce credentials and our high school students, which I'll talk about shortly. 60% of our population is female, which is also a national trend, something we are paying attention to. While the 60% female population is in traditional credit, where we are seeing an increase in males are in those short-term credential programs. And so it's interesting to see that men are not, men have not stopped out of college, which has been a national talking point. They're just consuming education very differently, and it's usually in more small digestible chunks, which is our workforce credential programs. 68% of our students are under 25, and I wanted to point that out because I think community colleges are known for being like your second chance place where older students come to school. But almost 70% of our students are under the age of 25. And that's important for the college because they have very similar needs to those who are going off to a traditional four-year residential institution. 53% of our students are minorities, and the majority populations there are African-American, Latino, and Hispanic, sorry, Asian-Pacific Island students. And 25% are military affiliated, and we're really proud of our military population. We have retired veterans, active military, the children and spouses of veterans. Many of our students who are retired veterans are my age. You know, they went to the military at 18, they spent 30 years, and now they're not really looking to be fully retired, they're looking for a second career. And so it's an interesting opportunity we have to serve people who've already served their country for three decades, and now they're looking for some additional training to start their second career in life. I won't go over everything on this slide. However, I will say, almost anything you want in education or training in at Virginia Peninsula Community College, we have it. I left some pamphlets outside, so if you'd like to pick one up, you'll see all these programs listed in it. It would be easier for me to say, the only programs that we don't offer yet is airline maintenance and sort of like airline pilot training. Those are the only two that you won't find at our institution, and we're still looking into if that's even, if there's a demand for that in this area. But if you have two weeks to two years, we have education and training available for you at the college. One of the things that we are being very intentional about is what's something we call stackable credentials. And so we understand that people are coming to the community college not necessarily for a two-year education, not immediately. Some people want one class, or they want a 12-credit certificate. They may then want an associate's degree. And so we've designed our pathways so that no matter where you start, you don't lose time, money, or credits. So if you take one class with us, we've designed pathways to make sure that one class would count towards a certificate and an associate's degree. And if you decide you want to go on to a bachelor's degree, we work with all the public colleges and public colleges in the Commonwealth to make sure that 100% of your associate's degree will then transfer if you decide to go on to a bachelor's degree and beyond. So no matter where you start at the community college, there's a pathway designed for you, and the pathway is interchangeable if you decide we have engineering students who come back to us for an HVAC certification. And they have, they have their bachelor's degrees after they've moved on for us, but they decide they want to do home maintenance and have their own companies, and so they come to us for HVAC degrees. And the pendulum of how you get your education and training can swing in either direction, and we've stacked the pathways to make sure that you don't lose credits. I will share a little bit about our enrollment by locality. There's nothing truly significant here, but I'd just like to show you how our enrollment is broken down. And when you look at the sizes of the cities and the counties that we serve, these numbers are pretty much comparable to the size of the cities or the size of the counties. What may be a little bit more interesting that I'd like to share is the enrollment programs or the programs that students are enrolled in. And so you'd see the first line, about 40% of our students are in the traditional transfer program, which means they've come to the college and they actually plan on getting a bachelor's degree. They have every intention on transferring. And so for the most part, that's what community colleges were designed to do, right? To get you on your way to a bachelor's degree, if that's what you decide you want to do. But the second line you'll see, another 30% are in the occupational or technical program. So I consider those your terminal associate degrees. So the picture you see there, that's actually our dental lab, a dental hygiene lab right here at the Historic Triangle Campus, and that would be considered a terminal degree. So if you want to be a dental hygienist, you can come to our college for two years, you'll become a dental hygienist, and you don't actually need another, you don't need more education afterwards. So you can get a degree, and you can get a pretty high-wage job after taking one of our AAS degrees. The other, the third one, is the non-curricular, what I call just visiting. And you would be very surprised, we have, we have medical doctors who come to our college. Why? Because now the medical doctor's office, you need to have some sort of cybersecurity and programming language just to be a doctor. And so if you go to your doctor's office, you'll see there's computers, even in my dentist's office, right? They don't take, they don't have film anymore. They slip some piece of technology in my mouth to take pictures of my teeth. And so we have folks who come back to us to do what we call reskilling or upskilling. So they're, they're just there visiting, or the person that says, "I'm going to Italy for the summer, and I'd like to take, you know, an Italian course," or our high school students, which is one of our largest growing populations, our high school students who are saying, "I want experience in college before I graduate from high school." So we have 31% of the students who come to our doors are the ones who have no intention on actually earning a college degree. And I think that's important because when you hear about students who don't complete their associate's degree, I like to share that because a large population, a large portion of our students have no intentions of completing a degree. They're there for a short time, and they let us know that. I will share, one of the things I'm really happy about is to see the increase in enrollment. The college was on a downturn, as most community colleges were, for about the last eight years. This fall was the last, was the first time in eight years that we saw any increase in our college enrollment. I would love to share, dual enrollment is where we're seeing the biggest increase. High school students, this, this spring, we have almost 2,000 students in our dual enrollment program, and that's pretty incredible that there are that many high school families saying, "I want my young person to get college education before," or before they decide what they want to do with the rest of their lives. And again, the short-term credential programs, like those six-week programs, commercial driver's license, and masonry. I will share really quickly, you'll see here, this is how we divide our dual enrollment programs. You'll see last fall compared to, I'm sorry, Fall '21 compared to Fall '22, we're seeing significant increases in our dual enrollment programs. One thing that I'd like to share, since I'm in Williamsburg, is while you'll see on this list there's a 7% decrease in dual enrollment for Williamsburg James City County Public Schools, that's in the traditional credit programs. One of the things we've been working with Dr. Owen for the Williamsburg James City County Schools is getting more students into the trades. What they're finding is that a lot of those, their students don't know what they want to do when they graduate from high school, and they're not comfortable making the financial commitment of going to college. And so the state offers us funding for high school students to take the short-term credential workforce development courses. And something I'll tell you about in a second, we have a new opportunity to bus students from the Williamsburg James City County Schools to one of our new centers. And so we're working with them in response to what students are saying. They're saying, "I'm not sure I want a traditional college education, but I do want to be ready for work." And so we're working with the Williamsburg James City County Schools to expose students to workforce credentials and also hopefully get them certified before they graduate high school so they can go to work immediately if they're not sure if they want to go to college. So what you see here is a picture of our new trade center. It's in Tuano, it's in the Tuano section of James City County. This facility opened in February, and this is part of a grant, it's grant-funded. I'm sure I don't have to tell you, employers are desperate for talent. That's the talking point throughout the peninsula, and the Commonwealth is that employers not find talent. And one of the areas that's in grave demand, especially in our industry, is the maritime industry, masonry, construction trades, like the amount of the work that you do with your hands, engineering, electrical work, there's a huge gap in the, in the amount of people who can do this kinds of work. And so we received a grant to expand the capacity for the college. Previously, if you wanted skills trades training, you had to come to Hampton. No matter where you lived, you had to come to Hampton. And that was very inconvenient for the individuals who lived in this area of the peninsula for a number of reasons. And so we were given a grant, and we opened recently a skills trades center in Tuano, and I will invite you all to a ribbon cutting that we're having this, this Thursday. And students who attend this center, they get training in, as you see, welding, carpentry, masonry, and CNC machining. And we have a line of employers waiting to hire these students as soon as they're done. Some offer them jobs before they even finish the program, which is always exciting. But this is also where we're hoping to work with the Williamsburg James City County Schools and have students come to the facility after school. So it would give them an opportunity to attend the training center between 2:00 and 4:00 before adult students come in in the evening. Alrighty. One of the things that I did want to mention, and so this is a lot about the trade center that I just discussed, one of the things that I think is really important to share is that we don't believe in training anyone for, if there doesn't exist the job, if a job doesn't immediately exist. And so one of the things that our training programs lead to is national certification. And so towards the bottom, where you see programs and professional certificates, every program that we offer leads to a certification, and we follow students. There's actually funding available to make sure that they can take their certification so they don't just graduate with the knowledge, but they can get the national certification that makes them immediately more marketable than anyone else, any of their other peers. And so we make sure that the programs that we offer lead to a national certification so that our students are the most qualified for the vacancies that are available. The other thing I wanted to mention is the tuition and the funding. Because of the generosity of our state, the General Assembly in our system, you can get an education at our college for zero, almost, almost no cost. The programs are highly subsidized, and the majority of our students can attend any one of these programs that might cost $3,000 for as little as zero and to as much as $1,000. And that's on the high end. And so there's a lot of funding available for students to get education and training that then lead them to really high demand and high-wage jobs pretty quickly. One of the other things that we're doing, we, we've done this as an institution for a while. They took a break during COVID, but one of the things that they are relaunching is what we call the customized training. And so for our local businesses who want to engage in professional development for their staff, they can come to us and ask us to customize training for them. So we worked recently with Pecosin, the city of Pecosin. They wanted to do public speaking training for their staff, we can do that. We can do diversity and inclusion training. So we can actually give you what we call out-of-the-box training. So if you want to do a standard customer service training for your employees, we can do that. Or if you want to customize something specific, so maybe it's customer service for the health profession, we can work with organizations to customize training, customize training sessions for them. All right, coming soon. One of the things that I'm really excited about is what we get to do here at the Historic Triangle Campus. And so the pandemic, as I'm sure everyone knows, had a, took a huge toll on our staffing. Last year, as of this time last year, we lost 25% of the staff we had at the college. It was a lot of turnover, and that made it very difficult to provide the kind of services for students that we know our students deserve. And so we've been able to rebound, and we've got lots of hiring that's underway. And a couple of the things that we plan on doing is hiring dedicated, what they call college navigators, which means if you raise your hand and say, "I'm interested in some sort of education and training," we're dedicating someone to the Historic Triangle Campus to serve just the Williamsburgs, individuals from Williamsburg who are trying to figure out what their next path is. And that is, the college committed to doing this as, as part of a system-wide initiative, but we could not afford it. And it was the generosity actually of the city council that helped us be able to afford to fund a college navigator position that would solely support individuals from Williamsburg who are looking for traditional education or workforce development. We're interviewing for those positions now, so I'm very excited to have someone from this community, working with individuals from the community, to get them on the right path to education. Enhancing the class schedule is another thing that we, we've been looking at. I love data, and so we started asking ourselves, do students who start their academic career here, do we offer all the classes that they need to graduate here? And we found that was not true, that if you were a Williamsburg resident, you might actually have to go to Hampton to take a course because of our schedule. So we're optimizing our class schedule so that if you start your academic career at the Williamsburg campus, you should be able to graduate from the Williams, because it's an official campus, not a satellite site. So those are some of the things that we're doing. Increasing student clubs and events and activities. We have, this semester, we have almost 1,000 students who attend classes at the Williamsburg campus, and all the activities tended to be happening in Hampton, right? And occasionally, they would sprinkle a little activities in Williamsburg. And so we've hired additional staff in our, in our student life division to make sure that there's student government representation, that there's club representation, and that anything that's specific to the Historic Triangle, or just to have parity between the Historic Triangle and Hampton, that that exists. So we want students to have the full experience that they would have if they were at the Hampton campus. We're doing the same for our faculty, to make sure that they feel engaged and that make sure they don't feel like, you know, the smaller campus always has the redheaded stepchild feeling. So we want to make sure that everyone feels as if this is their campus, and the things that are unique to the Williamsburg campus get celebrated. The last thing that we have a great opportunity to do is to work with some of our local corporations, not just on activities and events and career services for our students, but also to develop new training programs. So I'm really excited, there's a company on the south side actually called Drone Up, and drones are their business, and they have this amazing partnership with Walmart to use Drone Up to help deliver retail items. And we are the only college in the area that actually offers a drone program or certifies people to be drone pilots. And that's a real pilot's license that's authorized by the FAA. And so we've been working with them to push out more drone flight technicians. We also, this morning, I learned, we won a grant from the Virginia, Virginia Natural Gas to actually work with the agriculture department to use drones to help in soil preservation and surveying and things of that nature. So we have this really interesting opportunity. You can't get a degree in drones, right? But drones have become very multidisciplinary. And so drones are impacting the television and film industry, the agriculture industry, and we are the only program so far between Richmond and anywhere else east of here that offers drone education. Virginia Natural Gas, Dominion Energy, we have this incredible opportunity to utilize the Historic Triangle Campus to expand these programs. And so if you're ever out there, you'll see drones flying in the air. So I just wanted to share with you, there's a huge industry, a burgeoning industry, where drone training is necessary, and I'm really proud that we continue to be recognized as one of the best programs for drone flight pilots. All right, so I'll go through these last ones really quickly. Coming soon, you will see off 65, or 64, we have a new building that is being planned for the college. Our campus has the original footprint from 1967. The building I live in is scheduled to be demolished, and in a few years, this new building will be erected. This is going to be at the Hampton campus, so we're looking forward to having a new footprint. The HT campus, the Historic Triangle campus, is actually the youngest property that we have. That building is about a little over 20 years old, and so this will be the newest facility. When you tell young people that you offer modern education, it's a real tough sell when they walk in and see buildings that still have the 1967 footprint. So we're excited about this. We had a beautiful theater that collapsed about two years from today, and two years ago to date, and we'll be replacing our theater. Until then, we're actually working with the city of Williamsburg to support a multipurpose theater that's going to be built here until we have our new facility return. We're opening a center for teacher excellence, and so you may know that the Commonwealth of Virginia is changing the standards for early childhood education teachers, and our public school teachers are going to have an interesting new curve. And so one of the things that we're going to be doing is preparing childhood educators and all teachers on the new standards, and also providing care for and education for single parents or new parents just on what it, what it takes to, to raise a baby, so from baby to four years old. We also have a very, very, very strong interest from the Department of Defense to expand our maritime training, information technology, health, and construction. We recently won a $3.5 million grant from the Department of Defense to expand our trades training. So you're going to see a lot more trades investment, the Navy, Department of Defense, Dominion Energy. There's a lot of companies that want to invest in what we call non-traditional education. And so we hope, we plan to continue seeing growth in the non-traditional forms of education. So folks who are not actually earning a degree, but who are earning the skills that it takes to fill the thousands of vacancies that our employers have in these areas. The last thing I will share is, one of the greatest challenges, well, I will share, it's great to work at Virginia Peninsula Community College, there's so many wonderful things going on. We're hiring lots of new people, we're creating new programs, we're in an amazing community. There's not a lot of challenge, you know, the biggest challenge we always have is funding. But for the most part, we work in a great community that's very supportive of the college. The high school superintendents are supportive, we have great relationships, so that's wonderful. Our biggest challenge is the state model funding for community colleges, and that's just not Virginia Peninsula, that's most community colleges in the country. But one of the things that we focus on is state funding. A four-year institution receives about $7,500 per student in state funding, and a community college receives about $4,300. And so, as you know, our students, most public four-year institutions do not serve someone who is homeless. They do not serve someone who's a single parent, they do not serve someone who's on social services. We serve a very interesting population of folks who are struggling sometimes just to make ends meet. And so as a system, not just our college, we are pushing for the, for the General Assembly and for the state to reconsider how colleges are funding. And so I share that because the outcomes that we produce, we believe, could be so much better if we had the funding model in which to do so. So I just wanted to share that, of all the challenges we have, funding is always the greatest challenge. But also, that is why the generosity of our localities is so important. And so the funds that we get from the city of Williamsburg helps us to fund things that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. So I wanted to share that, that I'm not coming with an ass. You've already given the college so much, and we do appreciate it. And that's all.
Well, thank you, Doctor, for, for being here today. Thank you for bringing maybe some new excitement and enthusiasm to the college. You know, it goes without saying, I think everyone in the room would agree that education is extremely important, and I think that a unique product that you provide to your students is really what we need to see to help economic development. You know, we all serve on boards of commissions, but I serve on some in the peninsula area. And we hear often that these new industries don't have the workforce. And so being able to provide the catalyst for the person to get the education they need to get the job is critical. So thank you for, for doing that, and I really applaud your efforts. And just, you know, the credentialing and the stacking of it, and really making people more productive and successful. So thank you for that. I don't know, Vice Mayor, you have any comments?
Dr. Brennan, thank you for the update. I did a couple of questions. One thing I know, for a period of time, those folks already in the workforce and looking to expand their education, maybe the online courses weren't as available. Could you talk about how you've expanded online and hybrid training to meet those needs?
Yes, and what's interesting, we expected that when masks were no longer needed and vaccinations weren't being checked for, we assumed that everyone would come back to in-person learning. And we were wrong. We were, we were absolutely wrong. We actually still see at least 50% of our courses are online, and they fill the quickest. And so we've had to respond based on consumer need. And so we're actually offering more online courses, synchronous and asynchronous. And asynchronous means I log on when I want to, and I complete the course at my own pace. I thought that people would dislike that the most, but they don't. And so what we're seeing is that the majority of our students, almost the, the second-largest population, are students taking online classes at the college. And so what we do is we respond to the need. So we did anticipate decreasing the number of online courses we offer, but so far, the greatest need is still for virtual courses. And so we, we keep responding as the need increases.
Thank you. And only, a few months back, Councilman Rogers and I had the opportunity to meet with you, and you, you mentioned the drone program then. Can you talk about how, how you market those new programs so that everyone's aware that that's a, that's a new great opportunity at VPCC?
Well, absolutely. And so what's interesting is, marketing is one of the other things. When I first interviewed for this job, I thought I was here for a week before, and one of the things I realized was that I heard more advertising for a different college than I heard for this college, and that other college won't be named. But I said, "We're the peninsula's best-kept secret." And so there's a couple of ways that we are marketing. One, which is very interesting, local businesses, direct marketing to local businesses that use drone services. That has been really great to get training for folks who are already employed to get advanced degrees and certification in drone flight. So that's been very, very interesting. We never thought that current drone pilots would be a good market, but it has been. The other way is social media. It's really interesting to see the power of social media, especially with that 18- or 16- to 25-year-old audience. And so that's one of the things that we do, is we use direct social media marketing. Also, there is a company on the other side, on the south side, called Nautilus. Nautilus is actually a museum, and they have this huge dedication to drone flight and how drone flight has impacted, you know, the naval industry. And so we've partnered with them, who they also help us with advertising to folks. And we usually don't like to market in each other's area. It's sort of like a sign of respect for fellow community colleges, you don't market in someone else's area. But because we're the only one with the program, we ask for forgiveness and permission. And so we work with this other company to market on both sides of the, of the bridge and tunnel to make sure that people are aware, not only about the program. I can't say this enough, we have to share that the jobs exist. And so being able to share with our high school guidance counselors and through social media that, because drones are cool, but your parents want to know, can you really make a living doing this? And so we spend a lot of time focusing on the jobs that are available and partnering with the companies who hire drone pilots, that's really important so that parents can see, okay, my child isn't just playing with a toy, this is actually going to earn them a living. And so being able to market the jobs that are available, I think, have been a lot more impactful than just the program itself.
Thank you. And the last question you, you addressed was, I was going to ask about renovations and any new building. So you addressed that. But I did want to ask, I know it's been a while since I've been to the Hampton campus, but you, you still occupy buildings, other buildings on Butler Farm Road?
Yes, we're actually expanding, so we have, we have the Peninsula Workforce Development Center, which is one of the, it's probably the second-youngest facility. We have another building where we have our emergency medical services and nursing. And we're actually moving into, it's temporary, so I don't want to get too excited. But before that big, beautiful building is built, we have a temporary space. So we will actually have by May of this year, three other buildings that we occupy on Butler Farm Road. Farm Road.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I just want to thank you for being here, and there's so much energy and excitement and progress, and it's really excellent to see. And so I don't really have a question, other than just to, like, highlight and comment about particularly the dual enrollment and the relationship with high schoolers. And I imagine there may be an eye on even younger, you know, reaching children, you know, kind of getting the idea, right, of, you know, going into trades and the New Trade Center out in Twainna, that sounds really exciting, and I hope I can come by sometime and check it out, I would love that. So just really wanting to commend and amplify that aspect of it, because getting kids and high schoolers, like, interested in thinking that it's not just about, you know, the four-year college experience that they hear about so often. And I just really just want to say thank you for all of those initiatives.
Well, that is an area I will share that I have a lot of experience with. I will share in Hampton, Hampton has one school where they graduate students with an associate's degree one month before they earn their high school diploma. And that's a really great model that we hope to expand across the peninsula, but also in the other states I've worked in, North Carolina and New York City, having a ninth grader in college classes is normal. It's rigorous, but it is normal, and it's, we look at those students who are eighteen, they have no college debt, and then they can go on to get a four-year degree, or not, they can start work. It's something I'm very excited about, and I actually can't wait.
Thank you for the presentation and having been at the chamber meetings with you. I recognize the enthusiasm, and I already had the ribbon cutting for the Twainna Skill Center on my calendar, and I believe it's at ten o'clock on Thursday.
Yes.
I just had a couple of questions. As far as the military affiliates, is there still a GI bill that they can use for funding after retirement or separation from the service?
Yes, there's so much funding for our veteran-affiliated, the spouses, the veterans or active military, so much more than the GI bill as well. Families can use the GI bill, but even afterwards, the Commonwealth is very generous when it comes to funding. And so even if there's a shortage of funding, we have other ways to fill in the gap. But there, if you are a veteran or an active serviceman, it is highly unlikely you have to pay for your education.
Good, that's great to know. And so you mentioned the Center for Teacher Excellence, and that's going to be a new building, is that correct, or?
That's actually in Newport News, that's in Newport News, they have a redevelopment area where they're renovating a site in the City of Newport News that was just historically underserved. And so we are relocating a number of our early childhood education courses there as well to train teachers, but the Center for Excellence is something that's unique to us, and it's really to provide educational enhancements to our current teachers.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a feel for where teachers from the WJCC would need to go, and Newport News isn't that far. And you also mentioned about, you know, those who, let's say, get a skill such as an HVAC, and then they want to go into their own business after a while. So I assume they can come back then and take the necessary business courses to start their own business.
And that's if they need a business course, they absolutely could. We also have a Small Business Development Center located on the campus, and so if they just need help figuring out what's an LLC, and how do I file taxes, you know, as a business versus an individual, so we have those services available. So whether they need a full course, or just help with trying to figure out, how do I become an entrepreneur, we can help them.
Good. And then you mentioned that the visiting population was people who just wanted to take a class. So if I wanted to take a class on something, the process, I assume I just go online and register and?
Absolutely. You would apply, you would apply, just like every other student would apply, and if you know the course you want to take already, you can do it. We have what we call like a self-service model, and so if you know how to go online and shop on Amazon, you could select your course that way, but if you're someone who needs a little bit more assistance or guidance, we have that model in place as well.
Great, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Great to see you again, President Brandon. Thanks again for having Vice Mayor Dent and I a couple of months back. Having been to the campus, I can attest, it looks brand-new. And having gone to school across the road, we cannot say the same. So it really is an amazing learning environment that you all create. The dental hygienist position you mentioned is a great example of that, of those spick-and-spend rooms where you get to teach how to go into, like you said, a really high-wage-earning path. I had a question, I was surprised to see so many people from Williamsburg, six-hundred-and-forty-four, it had said, are in the accredited student program, and you listed so many of the certificate courses that you also offer. I was curious to ask if there is a, you know, top three or top five that you see are most popular for our area, like you said, a quarter of the students being military and two-thirds being under twenty-five, are there particular popular areas of interest?
Definitely. The top three is welding, HVAC, and commercial driver's license. We cannot offer enough of those courses. And a very close second would be information technology and the healthcare, so like phlebotomy, nurse assistant, and things of that nature. But those, we get people arguing with us because we filled every class and we don't have enough teachers, those are the top five. But for the traditional trades, definitely, commercial driver's license, HVAC, and welding are the top three. Can't fill enough sections of them quickly enough.
Yeah, I know hiring has been really ferocious in trucking right now, and I actually have a friend who lives in the city and has recently perfected his English through Literacy for Life and gotten a CDL and is now driving. So that's interesting, that testament that there is a lot of interest in those commercial driver's licenses. And then I had the same question for the student population, two-hundred-and-forty or so looked like they were from Williamsburg. Is it the same interest course-wise for them? And then you also mentioned the difference in in-person classes versus virtual. I would think there might be a couple more transportation hurdles for high school students. So do they particularly have an interest in asynchronous courses?
They do, and it's interesting, a lot of our students, if you come around three o'clock in the afternoon, you'll see the school buses on our campus, and so where possible, and when I say possible, usually if we can get a cohort of students together, they will work with the bus system and bring the students there on the school buses after school. And for others, they rely on the water system to get there. But I would have to say, the Williamsburg campus is the younger campus. It's very interesting, during the day, that's when you see the younger audience, and at night is when you see the older students, and those are students who tend to work in this area but don't necessarily live. So a lot of them are headed back to New Kent or to Richmond for courses. But it's very interesting to see how, in Hampton, you see the diversity, tons of mixing, like my Phi Theta Kappa president is a Vietnam veteran, he's seventy-four years old, and he's the Phi Theta Kappa president, right? And that's normal in Hampton. In Williamsburg, very, very, very young students are here during the day, and the working students are here in the evening, and they tend to never mix. And the younger students in Williamsburg tend to be taking in-person classes, not online classes.
Interesting, okay. Well, yeah, but thank you for the run-through of all the good that VPCC is doing, and like you said, and everything from new-age tech jobs, like with partnerships with Drone Up, and then core work like welding and HVAC. And thanks as well for showing some of the stats for Williamsburg City itself, those were eye-opening to me. So we are so excited to have you. Like I said, I know you've been in the position many months now, and get to bring higher education experience from North Carolina to New York, but we're glad to have you in Virginia.
And I will share one of the takeaways from our conversation, that our system is working on with the four-year colleges and universities. I'd asked Councilman Rogers, what kept you here after leaving, right? There's this thought about the brain drain, and everyone leaves, and I asked him what kept him here, and you said it was a job, right? You had a job, you had a community, and so one of the things we're working with the governor on, we all college presidents in the Commonwealth, is how do we create this statewide internship and externship program, so that people who come to get their education here, get internships here, who are more likely to stay once you get rooted in the community. And so that's one of the exciting things that we're working on with the governor, and I don't think he, he seems very open to that, but I just wanted to share, that was one of the takeaways from our conversation that we had, and I think is an exciting opportunity to keep more talent here on the peninsula.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you coming and giving us your time. Okay, takes us next to Item B, the presentation regarding the current efforts of the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District, and I think we have James Julius and David Beal here with us today, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Howdy.
I'm Dave Beals, I'm one of the directors from the City of Williamsburg for the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District. With me is James Zilius, the other director, and Jim Wallace, who is our district manager. And the presentation?
Should have a clicker like this up there.
Yes, okay, there we go. So appreciate your time this afternoon, we like to come at least once a year to talk to you, but more than happy to come at any time to answer any questions about what we do. Just as a reminder, we are a independent political subdivision within the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that is Charles City County, New Kent County, James City County, York County, and the City of Williamsburg. We're one of forty-seven different districts within the county, and we are, as I say, a political subdivision, we are governed by two directors that are elected from each one of these districts, plus we have the ability to point some at-large directors. And this oversees the funding that we get, primarily from DCR. We get about sixty percent of our funding, which goes a lot towards agriculture, as you might imagine, best management practices. But we also have an urban program that I'll talk about here, since we have so very little agriculture within the towns of the city. Most of the funding is obligated and tied to very specific efforts. And one of these is education programs. So one of the things that we run is the Virginia's Dominion Envirothon. This is for high school students, it's a conservation-themed program where we get teams within the high schools, they come together, they have a competition, and they move on. We sponsored the Jamestown High School team at the regional and state level, and in 2019, they were the national champions. And this year, we're getting ready to host our regional competition, and so we'll be having teams from, I want to say nearly a dozen counties, different districts and counties will come to us later this month. We also sponsor youth conservation camps, it's a Virginia Tech campus, and we are fortunate enough to be able to supply scholarship money for this. Normally, we have been able to do two, but the last couple of years, we've seen so much demand that we've been able to come up with three out of our budget. One of the things that we also are heavily involved is the Williamsburg Community Growers. This is a, it's over, but then the WIS complex. We and the City of Williamsburg have been important contributors to this, and it really has paid off. We were fortunate enough to get this very large grant in 2021 from USDA, from farm to school, and it really has gone a long way towards helping that. And one of the results is over five thousand pounds of fresh produce to local community members, schools, and people at need within our community from the WIS program. It's really, it's very satisfying. Some of the urban programs that I talked about has to do with things like you see here, permeable pavements. So this is, instead of having a hard surface, let the water run through, rain gardens, rain barrels, landscaping to conserve water and to reduce runoff. If you give us a call, we will be happy to come out and see what we can do. We have grant money that can be applied to reduce the cost of a homeowner to put in these best-management practices, and it really does enable a lot. I was on a call with them the other day, and there was a large project, the total cost was like thirty-four thousand dollars, and we were able to do grant money of up to twenty thousand dollars. And so we are able to enable some of these practices that otherwise wouldn't get done. The Turf Love Program is another popular program. Here's a meeting, I believe, was just held in one of the meeting rooms over here, with the support of the Master Gardeners. It teaches homeowners how to responsibly do their lawns, and particularly how not to over-fertilize their lawns, because all the over-fertilization, of course, drains down to the bay. We have a number of volunteers that help us, Dave Kleppinger, Wendy Hammerick, and Jim Ackridge, but we also do a number of educational events, like Turf University and Super Turf Saturday, you'll see advertised from time to time. Shoreline Evaluation is actually one of our biggest growth areas within the district. As you might imagine, we've got a lot of shoreline that touches the district, and erosion along the shoreline is becoming a major factor. And we are able to do quite a bit with that, and there's substantial grant money that is available to help with that. So in another partnership with the Master Gardeners, we started a program to where, like, we have, for the Turf Love, we call them lawn rangers, we are now working with the Master Gardeners to help with shoreline evaluation, and they come in and they'll do an assessment of current or potential uses, issues, and how to fix them, and then their staff will work to see if there's a grant opportunity. I happen to know that in Port Anne, there is one homeowner that we're working with now, and so we're already, this is a very new program, and so we're very pleased that one of the first instances of this is within the city. Thank you for the funding that the council has generously provided last several years. Here's the amounts, and here's what it goes towards. The supplemental support for VCAP, VCAP is the permeable pavement program that I talked about. Turf Love is available to people in the City of Williamsburg. In fact, as I live just down the street in the Oaks, and Turf Love came out and evaluated our neighborhood, and was, if you've got a lawn, call Turf Love, it's worth it, they do a great job. And the supplemental support for the shoreline evaluation is greatly appreciated as this goes on. FY23 is the same amount for the same programs, and our requests for FY24 are the same. So we appreciate how you all have been able to help and contribute towards our mission these last several years. That is our little short and sweet presentation. I'm Dave Beals. Please feel free to contact me, or James, or Jim, at any time for anything that we can help you with. We're here to help.
Well, Mr. Beal, I appreciate you coming in today. It's always good to get the refresher on what it is that you all do, and really, moreover, how you can be an assistance to some of our neighbors, you know, with the concerns that they have with stormwater runoff and rain gardens and all that kind of stuff. So I think that's invaluable, so I appreciate you coming in today to remind us of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Beals. Obviously, it's, as the mayor stated, it's a good reminder of the programs you have, and specifically the ones that engages high school students. But I was wondering, other than people watching today, how does the general public find out how they can get with Turf Love and VCAP?
Well, so fortunately, we have a website, ColonialSoilandWater... dot, oh, right there it is, sorry. So the website is probably the best way. I will say that one of the challenges that we have faced is to get the word out about what we do, because we have a tremendous amount of grant money that's available to help homeowners. But nobody seems to know who we are and what we do. To that end, we've recently also hired a specialist outreach coordinator, that I think we're going to see a lot more presence on social media, our website is being updated, and anything that we can do to get the word out, we're going to be making meetings at farmers' markets and things like this, too. So we're trying to get out into the community more.
Good, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I had the same question, is how do people find out? Because I learned a lot, and I appreciate everything that you all do, and thank you for being here.
Good, thank you.
Yes, and I would just like to echo the same, and in fact, after your presentation last year, I contacted Robin.
Oh, very good.
And she came over to my house and met with me and gave me some proposals and good ideas, so, very appreciative.
Excellent, good. She's kind of amazing, isn't she?
Yeah.
And I echo all the sentiments of thanks, Mr. Beals, and Mr. Julius, Mr. Wallace, as well. and Mr. Julius, Mr. Wallace as well, for being here. That's really great for you to know how much you all can assist folks interested in the conservation of their lawns. And I had actually clicked over to the website. And it is pretty much front and center around the services that you can offer.
Very good.
So best of luck as you onboard. The new person to try some new age marketing through social media and TikTok and what have you. I hope it goes well, but thanks for the refresher.
It's, so it's really nice to have a young person who understands these things?
I'm not on any of those. So you're calling for younger generation.
She's making videos, she's got so many great ideas. It's really, I think it's going to be great. We have a small but absolutely amazing staff that administer our programs. And I can't say enough good about them. And really, the mission of the district is such a good one for conserving our environment. And so anything we can do to help, please give us a call. We're happy to be there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the presentation and discussion concerning the FY24 City Manager's Proposed Budget. Mr. Trivett?
There we go. Now, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, what we thought we'd do is present the budget in brief. And so we're just going to walk you through the budget message that we published on the 31st. First, we start with the budget process, because it's important to remind people of how this works. You know, the budget process is quite lengthy, and it's easy to get lost if you're not paying attention. Our budget process has a whole host of participatory elements, opportunities for the public to be involved, provide their input, as well as their suggestions on what we could change or add to the budget. We're currently in April, and so we'll present tonight the proposed budget, according to the city manager. And then over the next month or so, the city council will have the opportunity to suggest changes and ask for revisions in hopes of bringing it back to the city council meeting in May. Our city charter actually says that that's when we will adopt the budget. And so that's our timeline for getting from here to there. Once we have adopted the budget in May, of course, the fund doesn't end. We actually begin the implementation of the budget, the execution of the strategy, in July. And then only in a few short months later will we begin the process all over again. Okay, so we'll start with the city manager's statement on the budget. And really, there are three significant goals that we were trying to achieve as we entered into this budget process. The first was to finalize the necessary funding model for the downtown library. That's a project that has been important to the city council and the citizens for some time. And the cities, or the library board, has asked the city to stay on a particular schedule for construction of the facility. And in order to meet that demand, we have been working on a strategy to fund the replacement of the library in its current site. That process was forefront as we began identifying where we would place new revenues associated with this budget. A second one was to improve the benefits package for the city. As you all know, hiring and retaining employees of a certain caliber has gotten harder and harder in every sector of public and private life. And the city, of course, is not immune to that. We are currently in a very competitive environment, particularly for public employees up and down the peninsula, if not all of Hampton Roads. And so it's very important for us to stay competitive. And that means constantly looking at our compensation package, which of course includes benefits. Last year, we were very fortunate to be able to offer a pretty comprehensive revision to the city's pay scale program. But we did not address benefits at all. And so this year, we decided to take a few small bites out of some identified benefit enhancements that were the result of an internal survey of the employees. So we're excited to be able to pursue that. And then the last one is to eliminate the city's reliance on funds from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development. And this is a goal that really stems from years and years of work that began, I believe it was 2012. We began the process of merging the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority with city government. And that was really to create some stability in the housing authority, which at the time desperately needed it. And we never really completed that merger. The urban, the HUD rules get in the way of completely merging the two entities. And so we want to take some additional steps to try and get closer to what we think is an ideal situation. So all of that comes together as we begin to put together the overall budget and the spending plan for the city. In this year's budget, all the funds come together to total ninety-point-seven million. If you're a student of the city's budget, which of course every citizen is, that's a substantial reduction from last year if you're just comparing budget to budget. But that's pretty misleading, only because, you know, as we post a budget, we of course have to reflect all of the revenues in and all of the expenses out. And last year, we still were carrying forward some revenues and expenses associated with COVID relief funds, one-time COVID relief funds, as well as the continued pressures on the budget, which are reflected in this number of ninety-point-seven of the major capital projects that we're pursuing. And so as we issue bonds and expend funds related to those projects, our budget is, I hate to use the word, artificially inflated from what its normal budget number would be of between sixty-five and sixty-seven million dollars to even this year, ninety-point-seven. So next, of course, we always try to identify what are the major budget drivers? What are the things that are really pushing forward the numbers that are in the four-hundred-and-some-page book that is the city's budget? And these are in no particular order, but they sort of work out to be in order of importance. The first is public education. And so public education, of course, is something that dominates budgets across local governments nationwide. Obviously, in most local governments, public education is the number-one expense. And our budget, it's really no different story, even though we have a joint system. So this tells you where we were in the budget process and where we have ended. In the operating side, as everyone knows, public education submits basically two funding requests each year. There's an operating request and a capital request. On the operating side, their request was ten-point-eight million, and this proposed budget funds ten-point-four million, which is about ninety-six percent of their request. If you've been following this along, and I'm sure lots of people have, the difference here is related to how much money is available to provide raises to WJCC staff. And the major question is, how much money will the state provide toward that effort? And that will relate to how big a raise can be offered. As most people know, we're in the joint system, and our contract requires us to provide approximately ten percent of the cost of the overall system. And so we share that with James City County. James City County's proposed budget includes four million dollars in the general line for operating funds, with an additional two million dollars available, depending upon what happens with state funding. Our proposed budget takes those two numbers and combines them and offers the city's obligated share of six million dollars. And so that's what's reflected here. On the capital side, the story is very similar. There's a request for sixteen-point-six million. The proposed budget funds fifteen-point-one million, or ninety-one percent of the request. Now, what's important about that particular number is that this is looking only at the next fiscal year, right? That's not the entire scope of the capital plan, which of course the requests are much larger. So this slide shows you the impact of assessed values, particularly this year as they increased again. And what we tried to do this year was show you a better picture of how this actually impacts our citizens. There are two ways to look at how people are affected by tax value, or the real estate taxes. The first are those people that pay monthly via a mortgage. And that's more than half, just slightly more than half of our citizens are currently paying their tax bills associated with a mortgage. And so that first wheel you see there shows you the monthly increase if we were separating out the taxes alone. So eighty-five percent of those mortgage holders are going to pay less than fifty dollars more per month as a result of these assessed value increases. The other category are the folks that are lucky enough not to have a mortgage or to be able to pull their taxes out of their mortgage. And they pay twice a year, biannually. And you can see there the similar breakdown of how those increases affect them. Of course, they're larger, because they're only paying twice a year, as opposed to spreading those payments out every month. The next one is inflation. And, you know, we started some years ago sending out a community letter to help explain the budget to the citizens and help identify what our targets were, what our goals were moving forward. I think it's largely been very successful. This year, we talked a lot about inflation, because it's obviously a major function, a major portion of what drove this budget to be what it is. As we entered our budget process back in November and December, we really thought that the revenue picture would be much different, that we would have more revenue on hand than we did. And as we got closer and closer to today, inflation has eaten further and further into surplus revenues associated with what I like to call organic revenue growth, which means growth not associated with increasing the tax rate. As people pay more for things like eggs and gas, the city pays more for the same things that we buy. And so our cost of providing the same level of service increases exponentially. As you can see there, the U.S. inflation rate, eight-point-six percent. One way to think about that is, as we think about salaries, which we're going to talk about in a minute, that translates to a cost of living increase every year that's roughly about the same. And so it's becoming not only more expensive for us to buy the things that we need, but also the money that we're paying our employees is not going as far as it did. Strategic priorities, we've already talked about these, but this gives you a better snapshot of what we were able to do in this proposed budget. The first one is, of course, the library, a major priority for the city. And what we really need to be doing is putting away one-point-three million dollars each year to help fund that library year over year as we begin to take on the debt associated with the project. This year, we were able to fund in the proposed budget five-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars of that goal of one-point-three. That's about forty-five percent. So we still have some ways to go. And I think the important message, particularly in that project, is that in order for us to stay on schedule, next year, we need to make up that forty-five percent. It's going to become imperative that that's what we do. So that will, next year, be a primary target as we start to put together the budget in December. The next one, as I said, is the separation from HUD. And as you can see there, in order to do that, we need to be putting away about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in additional funding that would go directly to the housing authority to offset that loss. This year, we were able to do two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that need. And so that means that we're roughly on a three-year plan to separate, assuming that we can continue to add to that balance every year in an equal or equivalent amount. And then the last target was our benefits enhancement. And we were able to fully fund those changes that we identified. So we're really excited to see that roll out beginning in July. So now we talk about the specific funds of the city's budget. And the first is the CIP. The CIP gets a lot of attention, because this is where we budget for our major projects. And I think it's really important for people to take a minute and understand the CIP's relationship to the overall city budget. So normally, what the citizens focus on, particularly as it relates to the city's budget, is the tax rate. And primarily, the tax rate is funding the general fund. And there, of course, there is some bleed over there in terms of how money is shared across the funds. But for the most part, that real estate tax rate is funding the operations of the city. The CIP is a different thing. The CIP mainly contains single-year expensive projects. Maybe there's projects that are so expensive that they actually bleed over several years, like a fire station or a police station. But for the most part, they're single-year expenses. And so when we think about, how can we lower the tax rate? Eliminating projects from the CIP, for the most part, there are always exceptions, will not accomplish that. This year's CIP, the projects totaled about twenty-three million dollars. And a whole lot of that has to do with our capital plan in general. You know, we have said for some time, and it's actually the theme of this year's budget, is that we're running this marathon of preparing for the next generation of public service. And as part of that, we're renewing the public infrastructure that we rely so heavily on. And as you can see there, we're deeply involved, of course, in a fire station. Police station is next to begin coming out of the ground. Associated with that is a revised and relocated public works yard. We will be looking at municipal office space. The library, of course, is on the horizon. And then the last project, hopefully, to wrap up this major capital emphasis, is the reconstruction of the Blatant Building here in downtown. And if you total all of that together, you're looking at about sixty-two to sixty-four million dollars in investment, roughly equivalent to what would normally be a single year's operating budget. So in order to meet that challenge, in such a small city, it's been important that we had a plan that started years and years ago. And that included, the word here I like, is buttressing that CIP to take on those big expenses, essentially fortifying it so that we had money coming in and waiting on those projects to become needed so that we weren't trying to shoulder all of that burden on a single budget year. And so far, that's been very successful. Next is the ARPA. We like to call this the ARPA-not-ARPA in our city discussions, because this is money that came to the city associated with pandemic relief. ARPA now has become sort of an umbrella term that applies to just about all of the relief funding that came in. But if you remember, as we were going through those years of pandemic, there were lots of different sources of funding, all with different names. But ultimately, we received about twenty-one million dollars associated with pandemic relief. Almost all of that was used to offset lost funds associated with operating losses due to the pandemic, which meant that we were able to set aside money and begin thinking about investment strategies for those funds. And so we started a process that included public input through a survey and then a steering committee to help us identify how we should invest that money, that one-time funding that would result in returns. And the city council held a retreat. We identified a whole host of projects. And that's what you see on the screen is the accounting for that. I think what's important to note is that this money is now sort of waiting, as we said before, like we did with the CIP, setting there waiting on these projects to mature. Because many of them required research, they required opportunities to come along, they required developers who might be interested, they required other funding to make them become reality. And so here we have what you might call seed money for many projects. The first one is One Williamsburg is a category. And that was a whole host of municipal projects associated with advancing our mission, buying equipment, starting new programs, things like that. CIP stabilization, as you all recall, we have been very worried about the CIP's health. I'm going to show you a slide on that in a few minutes, particularly as it related to city projects. And we worked hard to identify funding to help us overcome those hurdles. And we did use a sizable portion of the funding to do that. Affordable housing, there's a set aside for those types of projects and initiatives. The Blatant Building redevelopment, there's a set aside for that. A performing arts complex has been talked a lot about in our community. And so there's some seed money to help us kickstart a project there. And then lastly, the Research Village concept, a place where we can begin to do some economic development in the truest form of office and research space. So that's the ARPA-not-ARPA. The tourism fund, just to catch everybody up, this is the fund that resulted from tax changes at the state level. The city council wisely decided to take the funding that the city receives and set it aside in a new fund. Most of that funding is designed to incentivize and encourage new tourism product development. And so that's about two-and-a-half million dollars every year. We have gone through the grant process once, which resulted in a major project. And that was the Regional Sports Center. And so about half of that fund right now is committed to the debt service associated with the construction of that project. And so that leaves us with about one-point-two, one-and-a-half million dollars that we can use for grant funding in the next cycle, which is underway right now. In the utility fund, this is something that we've been watching pretty closely, because we think about increases in fees. The utility fund is probably on the list of needing an adjustment sooner rather than later, probably within the next two years. As consumption continues to decline, we are experiencing cash flow problems in the fund. And so we are going to be looking at increasing the rate in the next few years. The good news about that is, as you can see on the screen, our rate is still the lowest in the region. Even with a small increase, we would still be the lowest in the region. And then lastly is debt. So debt associated with all of our projects, as you can see here, currently, our debt is forecasted to be at thirty-nine-point-nine million dollars, two-point-nine million dollars in service. And that service is split between the funds of the CIP and the utility. So what is included in this budget? This is sort of designed to help simplify the four-hundred-plus pages. As you can see there, the three major targets that we were after in terms of funding as we put the budget together, I think the number that jumps out at you as you begin to look at sort of the line breakdown is the increase in cost for general government administration. Almost all of that increase is associated with personnel. And so the raises that are part of this budget and increases in personnel are all reflected in that. A little more on the breakdown. Obviously, our biggest increased expense in the operating side are personnel pay increases. This is equivalent to a five-percent raise. As I said earlier, our employees are experiencing inflation, just like everyone else is. And that inflation rate of eight-point-six equates to the cost of living. We're not proposing to do a cost-of-living increase equal to that. We're trying to strive for about five percent, which is what most localities in the region appear to be doing in their budgets. We did have an additional school. We did have an additional school request, which is included in this budget of $691,000. That's roughly equivalent to about a $6 million increase in their overall budget jointly between the city and the county, the benefit enhancement program, and then also matching the region's recent increase of fire stipends for certifications like paramedic. This budget does add two and a half new FTE positions, one part-time conversion, and then two full-time positions. So every year, as we go through the budget process, we meet with the departments, and departments submit their needs. We match those needs as best we can with new revenue, and there's always things that can't be fulfilled. This year, that number totals $1.1 million. As you can see there, the number, the amount of the funding not included related to the three strategic priorities we talked about is at the top of the list. The Police Department would like to add six police officers to increase their on-patrol, as well as a DORA ambassador that would help us do new enforcement of the ABC zone downtown, if that's something the city wanted to pursue. We did want to do a centralized landscaping plan. As you all know, we have a robust and extremely capable landscaping department in Public Works. We also do a landscaping element in Parks Recreation. And there's some efficiencies to be gained by merging those two together and probably some improvement in both realms by having those expertise in one place. It would also allow us to add a turf master and an arborist as certified positions, giving us even more capability. A police certification program, similar to what we just talked about with the Fire Department. The Police Department is going to continue to work on that program over the next year. I expect that'll be a request that returns in next year's budget. And then a similar efficiency strategy would be to move from our contracted janitorial service to an in-house janitorial. The real benefit of that proposal was that we would augment our existing, very small, two-person facilities maintenance team. It's really not sufficient for us to be proactive in facilities maintenance. We're being very reactive, and what we'd like to do is get ahead of that. So by adding some folks who were charged primarily with janitorial, we would have had some extra hands to assist with that proactive approach to facilities maintenance. So what are we looking at as we consider the budget going forward? First and foremost, of course, is sufficient funding for our strategic priorities, as we've illustrated, I think, very well. The three priorities that we have, we only funded one. Two were left outstanding. One is an important target set not necessarily by the City Council, by an outside body, the Library Board, and in order to meet their schedule for construction, we really must focus on that in the next year. The HUD separation concept is one that's really controlled by the City Council. We can move at the pace that seems right for us. The one caution I would note is that in order for us to make the separation, it begins a 10-year clock from the point at which we stop taking the money completely. So every year that we delay, we're still 10 more years away from completing that merger. Next is CIP health, and I've got a chart here to show you that. So this is what the CIP health looks like before you factor in the school projects that are on the horizon. Okay? So as you can see there, everything is above the line, which is the important message, which means we have funding left in the CIP at the end of every fiscal year for future projects, and that's really how we measure the health. But when you factor in the known school projects, the story is very different. And this is not to place blame on the schools. They have needs, just like we have needs for capital projects. It's just their needs are very expensive. I think in the next five years, $160 million worth of school projects, and as you can see, we're going to need a plan to deal with that relative to the CIP as we move forward. Competitive salaries and benefit programs, that's a situation that's likely not to get any more stable as we continue in the region to play leapfrog with each other as to who's paying more for firefighters and police officers and general government employees. Everyone is going to be trying to catch up at the beginning of each budget year. So we're just going to have to keep an eye on that and see where it goes. And then lastly is global economic uncertainty. I mean, if you are a student of the economy, you don't have to pay very close attention to see all kinds of indicators that the future is uncertain as it relates to the economy. There's a lot of folks talking about the R-word, and it seems to be looming for sure. All indicators are pointing in that direction, and the way that we make sure that the city is ready, being so tourism-dependent, is to make sure that we keep that reserve where it needs to be so that we can meet those challenges and the opportunities when they come along. Things that we need to consider, as I said, we need to consider the future utility rate increase to stabilize that fund, and then we really are going to have to have very serious and difficult conversations regarding the school projects' impacts on the CIP. And that's separate and apart from the operating requests that might come in future years. So we're pretty excited to submit this budget. I think it allows us to accomplish a lot. It sets us up for success certainly in the future and enables us to complete this robust capital building plan that we've engaged in. So again, just where do we go from here? City Council will have three public hearings regarding the budget on Thursday of this week, and then next month, we'll have the opportunity to discuss the budget again at the work session, and then finally, right before, hopefully, adopting the budget on Thursday at the regular meeting in May. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Drew. Clearly, a lot of work has gone into this, both on Barbara's and her office and your office, to put together this proposed budget, which is now ours, to review and go over, listen to members of the community, bring back feedback, and make any suggestions to staff so that they can make some changes before, hopefully, April, or May, rather, when we go to approve this. So I don't have any specific questions, but does any other member of council have questions for the city manager?
Yeah, just, Mr. Trivitt, thank you for the presentation and to all the city staff that participated in putting this budget together. I was wondering, could you just talk a few minutes, because one of the biggest questions I get is about the assessments. And, you know, there's still a perception that we just decided we're going to raise assessments, but could you talk about what drives that so that folks in the community understand?
Sure. Yeah, so most cities in the Commonwealth reassess property value every year. Counties sometimes have varying schedules. I know that Gloucester County only reassesses every four years. And so every year, we're doing that. And the reason that we do it every year, most cities do it every year, is so that the increases that result from property value increase aren't quite so shocking in the adjustment process. So the assessor is not here, I don't believe. Oh, there's Derek. So we can call Derek up to talk about the process, but this is not something where we just decide in a room, we're going to increase property values by 15%, 20% this year to make sure that we have enough revenue. There's a scientific process that goes into it. Mr. Green monitors the sales that occur every month, I think actually every day, and analyzes that compared to what we have properties assessed at, and we're able to identify as the percentage decreases from, let's say, 96% of value being assessed to market, we know that we're going to have to close that gap when we get to the end of the fiscal year so that we're assessing as close to 100% as we can. And so that's the process that occurs. Like I said, I think for most people, it's hopefully comforting that we do it every year. I know that, like in Gloucester County this year, I believe that their increase, because this was an assessment increase year, was 36% on average. But that's the result of waiting four years to do that adjustment. And I think for some people, that would be very difficult to do. So I think assessing every year creates a much more stable pattern and hopefully makes it at least a little bit more predictable. But again, it's entirely based on the market. It's not based on our desire for additional revenue.
And just real quick, if I could point, you know, as we do it every year and we see incremental increases, by doing it every year, if there's a decrease, then our residents would be able to take advantage of that, as we saw, you know, during the housing crisis in 2008, '09, when assessments did come down. So sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're good. And then just another comment for pointing out the projects in the CIP, and I really encourage everyone to take a look at the budget that's out there. Get involved in the process and engage in the opportunities to speak to the budget. But specifically on the CIP, because you mentioned the R-word, just because those, we, when we adopt a budget because those projects are in the CIP, doesn't mean if things change that we can't change accordingly and not complete a particular project because the majority of them have to come back to council anyway based on the cost of the project. But just because they're in the approved budget doesn't mean that we're married to completing those projects if things change.
That's right, absolutely. Many of the projects, you know, some of the smaller but still expensive projects are one-time approvals by council, but that approval doesn't happen until some point during the year. So certainly, we have the opportunity to adjust. And the larger projects, projects that require a design phase and a construction phase, there's usually multiple opportunities for us to decide, are we going to proceed or not? And so certainly, we're in that loop on some of those big projects.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for all the work and for making it all so digestible. I did just have one sort of clarifying point or question, and that's regarding the three significant goals, you know, and I see, like, you know, we come back to those over and over again because they've been identified as three significant goals. And so the library, you know, I get my head around that. I understand what that means, improving the benefits packages. But I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about the benefit and the reason why eliminating the city's reliance on HUD is such a significant priority and what that would really look like and why that is highlighted such.
Sure. You know, I think for me personally, and the director of the Housing Authority is here, I'm sure he'd be glad to speak to it too, is just like with our infrastructure, the public housing is aging as well. And so we're looking at needing to make substantial improvements there. The Blatant Building is certainly one that has reached the end of life and is on the schedule to be replaced. And as we consider how to do that, very often, the HUD regulations become very cumbersome in terms of navigating a solution to that. They require all kinds of very specific things to be done, including, you know, if we were going to rebuild Blatant today and we wanted to do more than just that building, some other type of use in it, like very popular mixed use right now, the HUD guidelines would make that very difficult to do. It almost requires that building to be completely separate and just for housing, which means it's that much more expensive and difficult to accomplish. I think that's a major factor. In addition to that, there are the daily operating requirements, there are the annual reporting requirements that are onerous. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't even as an independent authority from HUD try to meet those requirements, but it would give us greater flexibility in how and when. And so I think those are the major reasons for the separation.
I think that's really helpful as we do really look at our public housing infrastructure and think about what really works for Williamsburg and what gives us as a body and as a community that level of independence and flexibility, that sounds incredibly important. So thank you for bringing this to, you know, this level of discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. I only have two sort of comments, questions, based on Stacy and Pat's comments. So you mentioned sort of end of life for the Blatant Building, and I think it's important for people to understand that we have a lot of buildings that are at end of life. I don't know exactly how they all ended up sort of dying at the same time, but if you look at the fire station and the police station and the library, these are not young buildings. And so much has changed in terms of efficiencies and technology. So I think it's important that the public understand that we're not looking to replace something that's not really old and gone, so to speak. Not me, but, you know, they haven't quite reached me yet, but anyway. And then the other thing is, Far is talking about assessed values. Isn't there like a state code or a requirement that we are supposed to be within, is it 98%, 96%, something like that?
I think every locality tries to be as close to 100% as we can be. I think for some localities, that's more challenging than others. For us, it's become difficult to keep up during the year, despite the fact that Derek is visiting properties all year long and keeping up with the sales. It's hard to stay current when the market is in such demand as Williamsburg is.
And to say, I just wanted people to understand that that wasn't something arbitrary that we picked out.
That's right.
That it's something we have to follow based on the state. So, thank you.
Thank you, city manager, for this budget report. It's fun to see it in a different presentation side, but I like the marathon theme that you're building on here. I got this past weekend, the budget letter, and as some know, I live in a house with multiple other tenants. I think I'm the only one who's excited to get that, but I am really excited to see the budget this year, especially as there are some, you know, big-ticket, so to speak, items that we get to invest in, our personnel being maybe the most important of all of those. And so thank you for all the work that you and staff members have also done putting this budget together, since I know there's some late nights that are involved with that. One thing that I would be curious to see going into Thursday's public hearing and next month's probable approval is what it would look like to fund a portion of that additional security that has currently remained as unfunded. So it was lumped in, but there's a section of the additional police officers that also included the DORA ambassador. And I think that, when you detach them, was the lowest ask of all that was not included, about $62,000 for that position. It strikes me as a low-hanging fruit to address a couple of different items for us. The first is just on the security side, is that would likely be personnel that's in the downtown area, enforcement of the busking stations, which we have recently installed, certainly concerns of the businesses that may be around there to have a more localized security person there who can represent the force and assist them with issues they may or may not have. And then also certainly with the intent of that DORA ambassador being the policing, so to speak, of the boundaries of an open carry area to actually make sure that that is being adhered to. And then that leads me into the second piece, which is we have established the tables now as a permanent presence on Dog Street, and we have events in the area. I know there's a chalking coming up to kind of draw a core into that area and keep people around and going to our businesses that I can see the allowance for open carry in the downtown area as a potential positive additive that we have. So I know it is currently in the unmet or unfunded category. I'd like to see what it could look like to include the DORA ambassador in this year's budget. I'd welcome any additional comments from council members as well.
Okay, certainly, yeah. I mean, you know, we can absolutely look at that. I think, just off the top of my head, anticipating, one of the things that we don't do, and it's certainly not something that we advise that we start doing, is budgeting for attrition. You know, in any given year, you're going to have positions that go unfilled as we, you know, have that cycle through positions. And so I think that's something that we could look at and as well as try to identify a little bit of funding in some other places to put there. As you say, it's not a tremendous expense, and the benefit and return might be worth it.
Right. And then I'll just, you know, reinforce that I think, you know, it kind of speaks to what we're trying to achieve downtown and just having that dynamic vibrancy downtown and people eating and enjoying the area. And I think we've all seen the success that the outdoor tables have had, and so I think this kind of takes it to the next level and then offers an element of security to go along with it.
Yeah, and I think you mentioned the very, other than just focusing on the ABC part of it, I don't know how that fits into Chief Dunn's vision of it, but at least that there's that presence there that could benefit other areas.
Okay, so again, the public is certainly invited to reach out to members of council over the next month and a half. The next, the public hearing is April 13th, which is here on the screen in front of us, where we'll talk more about that. And again, it's an opportunity for anybody to come forward and speak about that. And then again, on May 8th and 11th at our regular meetings, be here to listen and answer any questions that people may have. So thank you again for putting together a budget. It's a big one. I don't know if anybody's seen it. I've got the book here. So if anybody's looking for some Good Evening reading, take a look at it, but it's very, as, I forget the term you used, digestible, because it is. And I think staff has done a good job, again, doing that, and the presentations are always well-received. So thank you. And as, if you're a property owner in the city and pay even business tax, or personal property tax, you've got a letter in the mail, which I think explained a lot of the budget message for the city manager. So thank you for that. All right, anything, let's see, what else we got here? Takes us now to City Council Communications. Anyone have anything to share? On the agenda is the schedule of meetings. It's also on the website, so any residents want to see what's happening and participate, those are there. Takes us now to an open forum, which is an opportunity to come forward. Anybody would like to do so? Seeing none, we'll close that open forum. Seeing none, we'll close that open forum, and I don't believe we have a closed session today. So the next thing on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
We adjourn.